Good morning. And I'll open the board session. It's Wednesday, January 9th, 2019. We're here in the Senator hearing room. And as always, our tradition is we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can't get the cadence down there.
Flag's not right.
Yeah, somebody moved it. We're already laughing this morning, right? It's a good day. All right, always a good day to be here. We have, nobody signed up for public comment this morning. Make sure that anybody that's here just want to make a comment. Seeing none, so we'll go right into our business. Commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You might note for the record that we have a new commissioner here today.
Do you want to make some public comment about that? I was just kind of like-
It's not my role, you're the chair.
I was just like letting it slide, you know? Well, okay, but before we go into business then, we may want to, who is he anyways? The new commissioner?
You're the chair, you tell us.
So, want to introduce our new commissioner. This is his first board session, Colm Willis. And Colm, you want to say hello? There's, I'm sure there's some people out there watching your first session.
Well, I'm happy to be here and I'm excited to get to work for the county. I imagine, yeah, it'll be a good, a good session.
Well, we're excited to have you, seriously. It's, it's good to have you on board and Sam's way over here, so he's the one that'll help keep you in line. I don't know what I can do to help you because I'm not the one that's always in line, so.
Then he's in trouble.
Right.
But, I did want to say, I'm so happy you're here too, Colm. I'm looking forward to it, I'll just say it right now, let's, let's mark this down and when, probably when I get done, we'll look back and recall the adventures we have. And there will be some adventures, you just don't know what they're going to be here.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, it's good to have you on board. And I know you've been working hard trying to get up to speed and we'll do everything we can to, to help you.
Thank you.
Stay up to speed and keep going.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And your, your major task is to keep these two in line. It's difficult, believe me.
You know, John, as you're saying that, I guess in, in this serious moment of introducing the new commissioner, I do want to say that, I want to say thank you to Commissioner Carlson one more time for her service for the last 16 years and all the great work she did for Marion County. And it's, it's different not having, yeah, because we used to have the, the teacher, the junior high school teacher to keep us in line. But she, I bet, in fact, if, I'm not really a betting person, but I bet she's watching right now. And she'll have, she'll have some feedback for us, but seriously, and I know everybody in this room thinks the same very highly of Commissioner Carlson, and we wish her the best as she moves on to be with her family and eventually and over to Boise with her family and a new, new and different place to live and a new experience, so.
I want to get serious right after I say this. I'm wondering if she can kick me electronically, is there a way?
I don't know, but I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out if I can do that.
All right. Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. On it, in it, under Board of Commissioners, we approve amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement with Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments, add $45,000 for Marion County share to fund a program coordinator position for the Willamette, Mid Willamette homeless initiative, and it'll be through June 30th, 2020. And Community Services, approve an order appointing Mike Adams and Ken Outfleet and reappointing Shannon Gubbs to the Marion County Fair Board with terms ending December 31st, 2021.
So we, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second on the motion. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Consent calendar's done. First item under action is to consider approval of an order establishing a three-year term for the Marion County Fair Board key volunteers and establishing terms ending for Bry Taylor Campos with a date, ending date of 2000, December 2019, and Amy Gutner Allen with an ending date of December 2020. And Tamara is here to share us with that.
Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome. Commissioner Willis, glad to have you up here and part of Marion County's family. Before you today is an order to consider just an adjustment in the Marion County Fair Board bylaws. It states that our key volunteers who were established in around 2015 to promote the planning and the advertisement, if you will, of the fair, and these key volunteers help us to organize, plan, implement our fair. The difference between a fair board member and a key volunteer is that our key volunteers do not vote. However, they attend all of the fair board meetings, they participate in the discussion, they take on projects, so they really have a very similar role as a fair board member minus their ability to cast a vote on issues or funding. We, in our bylaws, it states that the fair board members will review the key volunteers once every three years, but in review, we notice that our appointments of key volunteers only stated that they were appointed. It didn't have any type of opportunity or tickler period for us to bring it back for consideration. And so that's what this order does. It brings together the existing bylaws and makes an order for the appointment for a key volunteer for a three-year period. There are each key volunteer as well as a fair board member, as well, as long as their Board of Commissioners approve their, their reappointment, they can be reappointed for numerous terms. So before you is the order requesting this adjustment, and as you stated earlier, Bry Taylor Campos would be, her term would end on 2019 in December, and then we also have Amy Gutner Allen, and then her term would end in December of 2020. And just as a note too, we, because of the statute, which is very rare that a statute says when you have to appoint and review and, at, an appointment at the county, this is stated in the ORS as to when we have to, their terms are at the validity, or how, the period of time in which they are appointed. We are going to, as staff, we're going to be bringing these terms under consideration around anywhere from September to October for the board to have these conversations prior to appointments in the future. So this will be a regular process that we'll be bringing forward to you in the fall of the years in which we have, whether it be a fair board member or a key volunteer.
Tamara, I'm looking in the, in the, we didn't change the bylaws, so all we did was change the, it looks like all we did was change the, the last page where it says terms expire. Is that correct?
So the order never, in the past, the orders did not have a term period.
Right.
So this order now has a term period that matches with the language in the bylaws that states that it would be reviewed once every three years.
Okay. So, okay, so the bylaws already said that, but we just didn't have the terms.
Correct.
Okay, got it, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Jane?
Mr. Chair, just for a point of clarification, my understanding from Tammy's statement is that this is not establishing a finite period that any one person can serve, so I would recommend that on the last sentence, it is ordered that Marion County Board of Commissioners establish three-year term, that we remove the word "limit," because I believe that is misleading. It makes it sound like they're limited to three years.
Right. That's what I was looking for, the appointment and maybe reappoint it over and over again, and that's, I didn't, I didn't see that, but is that, is that said that in, in the bylaws?
It doesn't say that in the bylaws.
Right.
It says it will be reviewed every three years.
Okay.
And, but the way that this order reads is that there's a three-year term limit, so I think it's an easy fix to remove the word "limit" and just have a three-year term.
So that's the second line where it says consider establishing term limits?
Yeah, establishing-
Establishing term, to consider establishing a term.
A three-year term.
And then the order at the, at the bottom?
Yeah.
As well needs to be edited?
Yes, so it's at the, the very last statement, it is ordered.
Okay.
And then one sentence up, it appearing that the fair board endeavors to establish, it would say "terms," or terms of service.
Establishing terms for Marion County and then the term limit. So we can make those changes, right, those two changes. Wherever it says "limits," right?
Yes.
We need to take the limits out.
So if I could, first just, yes, I do, I hope so, but I, just to comment first, these key volunteers, it's just, that's been a wonderful program to get, first of all, their involvement and, and help in putting on the fair, but it's, it's a training ground for future board members too, and I'm pretty happy about it. And I don't think it should be limited. So Chair Cameron, if I could, and Jane, you help me, I'll make a motion that we approve the order that establishes three-year terms for Marion County Fair key volunteers and the recommendation, what the changes you made having to do with any, anything that limits the terms.
Limits the reappointment, yes.
Limits reappointment. That's the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I'm sure you're talking to the mic. And any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right.
All right, thank you, Commissioners, and if I may, just make one plug for the fair is that we are always looking for individuals who have an interest to serve and capacities that have, are of interest to them, and if the fair, if you're involved in agriculture, you're interested in supporting gig economies, you're looking for opportunities to bring community members together, we need and desire people to submit applications for review for these key volunteer roles to help us plan for the fair. This is a, a good group of people who can help us and work with us month in and month out, and there are no limits to the number of volunteers that we have, key volunteers that we could appoint, we just need to have roles and functions for them to fill. So if you're out there watching and you have an interest in serving with the fair board, we are always looking for applications and we invite those. And they can be sent to Marion County Attention to Community Services or to the Marion County Fair, and it'll find us.
Thanks, Tamara, for clarifying. Do we have the dates for the fair this year? Because I don't, I was looking on my calendar.
We do, it's the second full weekend of July, I can't pull it out of my head, but that's-
The second full weekend?
Yes, so it'd be the Thursday and Friday prior to that, and then over the weekend of that second full weekend.
So it'd be Thursday, the 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th?
And 14th, it's four days.
Right, okay. And do you have a key volunteer to herd the turkeys that show up once in a while at our board session?
Those are usually our young people who are engaged with our 4-H.
Okay, all right, good. Well, thanks for all you do there and for our key volunteers to do that, too.
All right, thank you very much, and we'll get the order taken care of.
Okay, we did have a motion, we did vote, right? So we're done on that. Okay, next up is Public Works for considering approval of an order appointing Kent Inman, professional land surveyor, as Marion County surveyor. Did I say that right? Is it Inman?
Inman.
Inman. Well, there goes my perfection today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Nicholas, Public Works Director. I'd like to present to you Kent Inman. Kent is a registered professional surveyor in the state of Oregon. We recently hired Kent to lead the county surveyor office in our, in the Public Works Engineering Division. Kent received his professional license in 2004. At that time, Kent was actually a staff surveyor in the Marion County Surveyors Office. Since then, Kent has worked for several private surveying firms, managed his own surveying company, and has served the citizens of Lane County as deputy county surveyor and the citizens of Salem as the assistant to the city surveyor. Kent and his family have been involved in the timber industry for four generations, and Kent lives in Kaiser with his wife, his two children, and a pug dog named Georgia. So you know what, I wonder why the pug dog gets name recognition?
For humor.
Yes. It's been the practice of the board to appoint an individual through a board order to serve as the county surveyor, because the county surveyor performs a number of duties and responsibilities on behalf of the county road authority as defined in ORS chapters 92, 209, and 368. Among that long list of duties are the following. The county surveyor maintains all public land survey corner monuments in the county, so that's the infrastructure that all surveys rely on. The county surveyor records and maintains records of all legal surveys, land partitions, and legal subdivisions within the county. And the county surveyor also receives and reviews all new plats and partition surveys for compliance with state and county laws, rules, and policies. In so doing, the county surveyor plays an important role in maintaining the standard of professional practice within the survey, the local surveying community, and helps to protect the property interests of all property owners within the county. We have for consideration today a board order to appoint Kent Inman to serve as the county surveyor. Kent is fully qualified to serve in this capacity, both through his professional credentials and through the breadth and duration of his work experience. It's my recommendation that the board approve the proposed order, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have while you're considering that recommendation.
So questions for Brian or for Kent?
Well, I do have one, I just don't see it on the order, and I'm also happy you're here before it sounds wrong.
Right, thank you.
But, but we just talked about, and the term, and this, I don't see anything timewise in a quick scan. Is there, Jane, does there need to be?
No, I don't think so.
Just indefinitely, until one party or the other says that's enough?
No, because, and again, I don't, I don't mean to be a doggy downer, you can appoint him, you can unappoint. I think the appointment, under the statute, you can appoint him, you can also not appoint him, so.
All right, just checking.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Brian, could you tell us a little bit about why you chose Mr. Inman and, and what excites you about serving as our, as our new chair?
You know, it is, it takes a person with, with a certain head on their shoulders and background experience to step into a county surveyor role and be successful right off the bat, and Kent is one of those uniquely qualified individuals, not only having sort of, sort of locally as the, not entitled, but in, in practice, the assistant city surveyor, because, you know, he's seen that process, he's seen the process of development and plating processes very similar to our own, and he's also worked in the private industry, and so he's got that perspective. You know, the county surveyor role really is a unique role within the ORS and within the surveying community, because, you know, the, what I said about county surveyors tend to shepherd the, the industry, they really do. They set a standard of professional quality that we hope that our local surveying community will stand up to, and it's a, it's a bit of a tall challenge. ORS spells out very concretely some of the minimum requirements that surveyors need to follow in their practice. And it is, you know, it, it's, the county surveyor position is sort of like a buck stops here. Before plats get filed, they get reviewed, and that review happens in the county surveyor's office, so it really is a leader, it's a leadership role, not just within the county, but within the profession as a whole. Kent brings that kind of background and experience, and experience within the county as well, so when we interviewed him, he ranked really high on our, on our, on our evaluation, and we're just really glad that he accepted the position.
Thank you.
Good, good.
And could you tell us a little bit about what you're excited about in taking this position?
Well, I started my professional career when I was here the first time, took the professional exam while I was employed with the county, and I'm just excited to, to be back in the county surveyor position if you grant it to me. And I'm excited in, just setting a standard of excellence in the survey section for my own staff and the surveying community as a whole.
Okay, good. So, welcome, and we're going to go ahead and make this official. Commissioner, if you would make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the order appointing Kent Inman, professional land surveyor, as the Marion County surveyor.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second. Discussion, comments?
One comment. Following Commissioner Brentano's question to me, I did check the statute under ORS 204005. It provides that the following county officers shall be elected for the, shall be appointed for the term of four years, and that does include the county surveyor. So this would be an appointment for four years under the statute.
You, you are amazing, the questions you ask are so important.
No, it's not.
Right, right, so, so we need to make the, the order-
I think it's automatic, isn't it? We don't need to-
It's automatic, so, but it is-
Okay, so, but it has to be tickled to be reappointed in four years?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion, you, you did make-
I will second it if I didn't.
Okay, all right. Any further, yeah, because we were in discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Welcome, Kent, and we'll look forward to seeing all those flags out there, right?
Yes.
No?
Pink ribbon.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next and last item on the agenda is to consider approval of a federal emergency management performance grant, 18-524, for Marion County's emergency manager, management program for the maximum amount of $155,280 for a period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. And Ed is here to present to us. Haven't seen you in a while, good morning, Ed.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Ed Flick, and I'm the county emergency manager. Commissioners, FEMA supports the county's emergency management program with a, a grant called the Emergency Management Performance Grant. This grant has historically been used to support salaries within the program and currently provides a 50% reimbursement for three of the four positions that are authorized within the program. The grant is appropriated annually by Congress, and in this case, this appropriation occurred over the summer in a funding bill, so it's not tied up with the DHS funding that's currently frustrated. The grant amount has grown over the years, looking back, it used to be about $60,000. For the last several years, it's been around $175,000 annually. This total for the initial allocation is what, the first of what historically has been two or three different allotments over the course of a, of a fiscal year. Because it's a federal grant and it's appropriated following the federal fiscal year, OEM has, Oregon Emergency Management has the flexibility to issue additional grant dollars, and in fact, for this state fiscal year 1819, the county has received $13,000, which were applied to salaries in July and August. So with this additional $155,000, that brings our total for this year up to nearly what we had last year. The, the future for ENPG is, is basically been flat, is the legislative history from Congress. Over the years, more jurisdictions have become eligible in Oregon, to include tribes, but based on a FEMA audit last year that looked at how Oregon Emergency Management itself was using the grant, it was determined by FEMA that they were using it in ways that were not supported in the statute, and so more ENPG has actually been made available this year for local jurisdictions. So subject to your questions.
Okay. Chair Cameron, if I could, and just one, and I'm certainly not going to say we shouldn't accept it, but I'm always aware there's some strings within any federal dollars. What, what, anything jumps out at you, Ed, that, that this requires us to do that perhaps we wouldn't otherwise, or is cumbersome, troublesome, anything?
Commissioners, there is a long list of requirements with any federal grant. We work closely with Debbie Gregg to make sure we meet all of those. The specific elements of performance for this grant that, or the, the cost of receiving the grant are articulated in annual work plan that we submit back to OEM. Really, the, the requirements are really quite straightforward. It requires us to maintain and update an emergency operations plan, to have an emergency operations center, and to maintain a hazard mitigation plan. We, we meet those requirements, and so really, the requirements with this grant really are things I think we would do regardless of federal funding.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I?
Yes.
So will this money be used primarily for those requirements you just outlined? Is that what the money's going to go towards?
This, yes, Commissioner, this, this funding, really, we reserve to support a reimbursement of that 50% of those three, three employees' salary.
Okay. Okay?
All right. Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve acceptance of a federal emergency management performance grant of $155,280 that goes from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll second the motion.
And a second, all right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay, motion passes. Ed, thank you for all you do, and should we set up another tour of the dam for the new guy this year? See if we can make it?
I think that'd be great, Commissioner.
Yeah, what, I'm actually working with Greg at the, Sam and I got to see-
Fish Collection.
The Fish Collection, to set up a tour, and I'm going to try to do that same time with Tim, because there's some people that want to see that from up, up at Detroit Lake, so we'll get you in there. Are you in better shape this year?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I'll never forget that I turned around and I looked down at Nedstone sweating, taking off his jacket, it was like, that was fun, yeah, good. Well, thanks for all you do, Ed, appreciate it.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, that concludes our business of the day, and I'm going to ask our, what is it, the second vice chair to read the calendar of events that are coming up.
Okay.
This is a new tradition, by the way.
This used to be the chair's job, right?
This used to be the chair's job, but I've just delegated it to somebody else.
Nice.
So-
Give him a little power and look what happens.
Yeah, make everybody else work.
So this morning, we had our board session, this afternoon at-
So just go through, just go through, yeah, so you can, we're obviously here, but you can just say, Wednesday, the 19th?
The 9th.
Yeah, the 9th, yeah, Wednesday, the 9th, at 12 o'clock, we're going to be blah, blah, blah.
All right, so today, Wednesday, the 9th, at 12 o'clock, we will be in Woodburn for our Marion County meeting there at Louise's Taqueria. That's 523 Front Street in Woodburn. On January 10th, at 7:30 in the morning, we will be in Kaiser for our Marion County meeting there at the Sherry's Restaurant, that's 4998 River Road North, Kaiser. On January 10th, at 4 o'clock, there'll be an Economic Development Advisory Board Structure discussion located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On January 10th, at 5:30 in the evening, we're going to have a Marion County Fair Board meeting, and that's going to be located in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building as well. On January the 14th, at 8:00 in the morning, we have the Association of Oregon Counties' Steering Legislative Committee and Board Meeting. That's going to be located at the Local Government Center, 1201 Court Street Northeast in Salem. On January 15th, at 8:00 o'clock in the morning, we will have the Oregon Mass Timber Industry Development Summit, that's going to be located at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street Southeast. On January 15th, at 1:30 in the afternoon- On January 15th, at 1:30 in the afternoon, we will have a work session on the 2017-2018 Annual Audit and Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That's going to be located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On January 16th, at 9:00 in the morning, we will have board session located in this room. And on January 16th, at 3:30 in the afternoon, we will have a tour of the Marion County Juvenile Detention Facility, and that's located at 2970 Center Street Northeast in Salem, and that's the Juvenile Detention Center.
Great, good job. Thank you for doing that. So, anything you want to talk about? Why Commissioner Willis is signing his name away?
Well, I'm just wondering what he'll find in, starting back to the first meeting, the adventures. One of the first things that happened to me, the first week, we had a work session having to do with groundwater, wait, is the right word? Groundwater areas depleted, but there isn't enough water. And it was the darnedest thing, call them seven hours, back and forth. And whoever they hired, peer expert, a hydrologist, would speak in favor of their client in just 100%. It was the darnedest thing I ever saw. Even one that had worked for the other side previously and spoke for them there, but now that he's, you know what I'm saying? And I thought, oh my gosh, how will I get through this? But luckily, that was the first and the worst, and I wonder if you'll run into something like that and be kind of curious, that raises your eyebrows and makes you shake. Dueling hydrologists.
Sounds like I'm going to have to get up to speed pretty quick on hydrology.
No, it hasn't come up really since. Drought years could bring it forward again, it's when they have a subdivision planned. And there's several areas that do have suspicious amounts of groundwater available. It's not a bad subject, just the so-called expert testimony was what troubled me.
Well, you know, we did have that meeting before I became a Commissioner with the Army Corps, talking about some of the changes they're trying to make to water allocation.
The work session we had. Allocation, it's like that.
Yeah, and that concerned me.
Sure.
Well, we had, I'm just trying to think, since last Wednesday, what's happened? We had swearing in. You did a good job hosting that on Monday.
Yeah, basically, well.
Yeah, it's great.
Everybody's happy.
Yeah, we had, what, DA, treasurer, sheriff.
Justice of the peace.
Justice of the peace, and two commissioners. You had your work cut out for you.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't perfect like you. I didn't get the order quite right. I don't know that it was prescribed, so.
I fell short of perfection when I said Inman instead of Inman. Yeah, yeah.
And you also didn't mention where we are, just assumed.
At the board session?
New senator here.
Okay, so, all right.
Otherwise, you're pretty good, pretty happy with it.
I'm never, I'm never going to be perfect, because I want to always have you have something to say.
And I'm not perfect, so I can spot it.
Yeah. Anything you want to, because we usually, this is, you know, anything you want to say? We usually give a report of something that we've been doing, but I know you've only been here, it's your third day on the job.
Yeah, I'm sort of getting, drinking from a fire hose, I guess you would say.
You had a tour of the hospital yesterday, anything interesting there?
I did not. The tour's coming up. I met with the health advisory board.
Oh, good. So you're going to be taking that?
Yeah, that's going to be one of my responsibilities. And, yeah, it was good. It was good to meet everybody and sort of talk about healthcare in our community and some of the challenges we're facing and that sort of thing.
Patrick Vance is just, he's a great guy that has been totally involved. He actually chairs our budget committee.
We talked about that, yeah. He ran a great meeting yesterday, actually, because it was quite a big agenda, and we were a little bit slow, and I was like, this is going to be, this is, we're going to go over, but he moved us through it.
I'm always curious, how was lunch? Because they do lunch for those meetings now.
Yeah, it was good.
What'd you have?
You know, there was a sandwich. I don't remember exactly what kind of sandwich.
Sometimes they do lasagna over there, Sam. It's like, mm.
That's the one I'd go to, then.
Yeah. All right. All right, I think we've done enough today. We're going to, if there's no further comments, we're going to go and adjourn us.